For Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, I would ask that you please join me in a moment's silent reflection. You can please stand and join the vice president.
Vice President, to the fire of the United States of America, and to your public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with thirteen justices, our own.
Thank you. Roll call.
There is no one joining us remotely at this time.
Executive session announcement.
The three commissioners met in executive session this morning with myself and two members of the trans systems team, Ryan Enler and Gary Schrock, at nine o'clock to discuss the purchase of land.
As for approval, commissioners meeting minutes for four oh five. I'll second it all, favor. Public comment. Commissioners comment. Okay, we have some proclamations to go through, so we'll just move with the proclamations. You do.
This is a pro. This is a proclamation for recognition of Jury Appreciation Week, which is April twenty-eighth through May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas the right to jury, to trial by jury is one of the core values of American citizenship. And whereas the obligation and privilege to serve as a juror are as fundamental to our democracy as the right to vote. And whereas our court depends on citizens to serve as jurors. And whereas service by citizens as jurors is indispensable to the judicial system. And whereas all citizens should be encouraged to respond for their summon for jury service. And whereas a continuing and imperative goal for the courts, the bar for the broader community, is to ensure that jury selection and jury service are fair, effective, and not undue repurposing on anyone. And whereas one of the most significant actions a court system can take is to show appreciation for the jury system and for the tens of thousands of citizens who annually give their time and talents to serve on juries. Whereas the Blair County Commissioners, together with the Blair County Court of Common Pleas in the county of Blair, we committed to the following goals: educating the public about jury duty and the importance of jury service; applauding the efforts of jurors who fulfill their civic duty; ensuring that the responsibility of jury service is shared fairly by supporting employees who are called upon to serve as jurors; ensuring that the responsibility for jury service is shared fairly among citizens; and that a fair cross-section of the community is called for jury service; ensuring that all jurors are treated with respect and that their service is not undue burdened. Providing jurors with tools that will assist their decision making and continuing to improve the jury system by encouraging productive dialogue between jurors and court officials. Now therefore, be it resolved that the week of April twenty-eighth through May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, be designated Jury Appreciation Week of Blair County, and that the undersigned support the celebration of this week in collaboration with Law Day on May one, two thousand and twenty-four, which shall include various activities in pursuit of the above goals. I make this in the form of a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Next. This is a proclamation in recognition of National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. Whereas in federal fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, nearly three point one million reports were made to Child Protective Services. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Blair County. Whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for maintenance of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed through the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education help community, big base organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Blair County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of people as National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in Blair County, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children, children, and families. I put this in the form of a motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I think if we can have Tiffany come up and just go over what activities we'll have for the rest of the month.
So I just wanted to let everybody know that we will have a ceremony next Tuesday at noon out in front of the courthouse. We'll have Kids First, which is a daycare provider, coming in with the kids to sing and read a poem. District Attorney Pete Weeks will be speaking. Some President Judge Keggeres will be speaking, just to kind of talk about the awareness. And then there are multiple other providers that are having their own events as well. I just would like to state that based off two thousand and twenty-one census, we have one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two people that live in Blair County. Fifty thousand of the, like, that's fifty thousand families total. Last year, we had three thousand four hundred and seventy-two reports, a mixture of CPS and GPS, which is about four percent of the families of the county. So numbers seem high, but if you look at it grand scheme, it is a small portion of our population of the county. So, you know, I think Commissioner Burke said it well, like, if it does take a village and we're all working together to get that out of this stuff. That's it.
I'm going to read a proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April fourteenth through twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, prompt response of police officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical in the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Blair County nine-one-one E center. And whereas the public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link of our police officers, firefighters, paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Blair County nine-one-one E center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Blair County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women who diligently and professionally keep our county and citizens safe. I'd ask for a motion. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Mark, anything you'd like to say?
I have nothing to say in our operations training, may I figure?
Good afternoon. I would like to say it is an honor on behalf of the dispatchers to be here to hear today's proclamation. And we'd like to thank the commissioners for taking the opportunity to recognize us during this week.
We appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Please take us through the consent agenda.
Today's consent agenda is number one hundred and ninety-five of two thousand and twenty-four. It's the payment of three warrant lists as outlined in your agenda in item A and six warrant lists, as ratified warrant lists, in item B. Item C is a budget transfer to cover maintenance on county vehicles. Item D is requesting approval for the reappointment of Phil Ricchio and the appointment of Michael Kestling, filling, he would be filling the expired term of Galen Bickel to the advisory board for the period of five one twenty-four through four thirty twenty-seven. That is the Park and Rec Advisory Board. Resignations, employments, and status change as outlined in items E, F, and G respectively.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda after I have the second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staff reports, Blair County Drug and Alcohol, as possible.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to present this grant to you. And I'd introduce also Nina Humphries, who actually worked on the grant. And she is our assistant director. I want to make sure I at least introduce you because she is the end position now for the, uh, year half now. And Commissioner Henderson, since you already were in the board, I want to make sure that, in case she has to present to you in the future. Now, on the agenda today, we have the, what is called, referred to as the probation with restrictive conditions, or IP grant from TransUnion Commissional Crime and Technology. This grant is specifically used to help support some of the costs that are associated with our special courts for DUI and drug court. Under this, it does fund the three probation office positions plus the testers for urine testing. Now, we did put all of them under the grant this time. And you did get a copy of that full grant in front of you, but it comes out to about one hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars for personnel costs for the county. The UI, the testers, the drug testers are considered treatment. In this grant, there is a fifteen percent percentage that can be used on safety, which would be the probation officers. And so all of the salaries are in this grant. Do not cover any of the other extra costs that come to the county for those physicians. And then under the remainder part of that grant goes mostly to treatment. It also does pick up costs for, and again, testing, and any testing supplies is considered treatment, and so those are included in that cost. So the SCAM and the testing kits, and then the rest of it is treatment, case managers, and certified recovery specialists physicians that are housed at our office. And we do manage this grant for the county.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'm sorry. Then also with this, the plan as part of that special motion. I'm sorry, Judy, that's okay. I'll let you go and then I'll say my. Yeah, there is two pieces to the resolution. I apologize. The other piece is the plan itself, which talks about the restrictive conditions that are utilized by the county of Blair. There was no real changes to that. The only thing that really changed was some of the statistics that we had to provide regarding our county and what it looks like in relationship to overdoses and those types of utilization rates with respect to conditions.
And I apologize for interrupting. When this agenda packet commissioners went to our solicitor firm, Paper of Barra, they indicated a few items on today's agenda they hadn't reviewed yet. If you don't mind commending your resolution to say that it would be approved first after pending solicitor review, if there's anything that they would find. Usually in grants from a state like this, there's not too much. In my, in my experience anyways, there's not been too many solicitor suggestions, but please there would be, there would be pending solicitor review.
We need you people, and I'm sorry, we didn't get the solicitor in time, so.
Well, that's okay. The grant is not due till the twenty-fifth? May first. So we do have time, so we got to a little bit early, so appreciate that. But I can, since I made a motion, I can remember to just say pending solicitor review. So I would be happy to do that, which changes my motion.
I will second that. All in favor? Thank you very much. And thank you. It doesn't look like Sue, but. She had a daughter's course event today, so that was wonderful. Requesting approval for minimum maintenance agreement between the county of Blair on behalf of Department Emergency Services E nine-one-one, the PALCO Power Systems for the maintenance of the Blair County nine-one-one commercial vehicle generator for the period of four one twenty-four, four three twenty-one, twenty-five, the total amount of eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents. This was an add-on to the PALCO agreement you approved before. So are we unable to make any motions or approvals on this?
Yeah, the only, the only three items that it affected was Judy's A and D and E. So this did have solicitor review or approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would make a motion to approve the preventive maintenance agreement between county of Blair and Department of Emergency Services.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Social services. Three.
Special is not here, so I'm studying today. And Judy's coming up with me because it has more to do with her office, but we are requesting a ratification of the letter of support for the Blair Drug and Alcohol Program for their grant application for twenty-four dash O two substance use disorder for drop-in centers to the Pennsylvania Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs.
Any comments or questions?
No, I just appreciate the, it's a very quick turnaround on the grant. It was due last Friday. It was worth seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Most of that going to the drop-in center to help provide them with resources because this money could, it was a bit of some of the monies that is given, that the state keeps. And then about the, the, the drugs and alcohol program. And so they put these grants out with the, with some of the monies from the, their manager. And it can be used for modeling, which is really, needs to be done so that we can enhance the services that are being offered at the drop-in center up to including healthcare.
Judy, what's, what's the trend? I know I've been out. It was a lot. Are you continuing to trend up or are you plateauing or down?
With substances, sir. What we are seeing right now, we have kind of a yo-yo effect with overdose deaths, unfortunately. They're not coming down. We had, after COVID, they went back up. We were like twenty-nine. Then we hit fifty-five. Then we hit another year of seventy and fifty-five plus last year. And what we're seeing and what we're hearing from the Department of, I'm sorry, Drug Enforcement Agency, is seventy-eight percent of the illicit drugs that are being used on the street right now, they are laced with fentanyl. It's mostly fentanyl. You're not seeing heroin on the street. It's fentanyl. It's mixed with xylazine. And what we're seeing, according to DEA, what we're showing from our overdose data, is probably over that eighty percent is showing fentanyl in the overdose deaths.
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent. And some have some, and that's mixed with other drugs. Cocaine could be there, methamphetamine could be there. It's just a mixture of drugs in those overdose deaths. What we're seeing is the methamphetamine, but we're still seeing alcohol. And we have certified recovery specialists at the emergency department. And what we're seeing there is primary alcohol. Probably about fifty percent of the cases that are CRSs who engage there are seeing. And then the remaining of that is illicit drug use. And so it has a wide variety of issues that go along with that, especially the methamphetamine. The, according to the DEA, the synthetics that are being used now, where these drugs are being made out of the next one, are highly toxic and having significant information impact on the cognitive behaviors of individuals. So psychosis, those types of things are happening admissions to our inpatient side. And stabilization to that can be transferred to treatment.
This is very, it's a good.
Yes, exactly. Oh, go ahead. The other issue that is new and emerging is fake pills. Fake pills are showing up in our community. Any pills that anybody's seeing on the streets right now are mostly pressed fentanyl pills. So there's a very high risk there. Also, what they're seeing now coming across the border is liquid fentanyl, which is a whole nother game changer for how it's coming across and how it's being processed. What I was going to ask you, in your comment about liquid fentanyl, that's another aspect to this. My concern is, do we have, I don't know if the community's grants come out, but the people that are working in that drop-in center or any, or, I'm sorry, substance abuse drop-in center, do we have gloves, protective equipment, et cetera, for when people come in? Because I understand that this stuff, you know, can get on your, your skin and care providers, police officers, ambulance folks can be transferred to that. I don't even know. Or supplies. Have them to protect them. Yes, supplies can be provided in that way. And when we give out Narcan, we do like a pouch that has protective gloves, has a golf piece in it. Because even with a fentanyl overdose, whereas CPR has removed the breath, with somebody in an overdose, you may still have to breathe breath for them to, and then once you put on a Narcan. So, yeah, I mean, those supplies for the drop-in center can be part of the budget. You know, it wasn't specific because of this subcontract. One most thing about this budget was that we were detailed on us as the applicant. But when I get down to the subcontract, because we were modeling and there was a lot of things, I just had to list those things that that money would be used for. And that will come down if we are awarded. Then it comes down from the contract to me, to them. And then in the contract, we get a little bit more specific on the things that they're going to find. But they have listed, we have listed there what the intent is for that, to help support them. Thank you. You're welcome.
I'd be a native motion to approve the ratification of support for the drug and alcohol program. Second, all in favor?
Aye. So you are up.
Good morning, afternoon. I'm used to being here in the morning. We're requesting approval of the amended form between Lake County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Zoom to amend the existing contract for the purchase of a room connector and the total per-rated amount of one hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-two cents for the remainder of the contract.
Any comments or questions? Just at this point, maybe a couple of sales.
Thank you.
IT.
I do not need your, your comment.
I'll make a motion pending solicitor review for E and then for the county of Blair. See why I have the terms in this. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ron.
Howdy. I've got two for you today, both related to Zito. The first is to basically extend the expiration date of a previous contract from August twenty-fifth of twenty-three, bringing it in through April thirtieth of twenty-four, at the same monthly recurring cost as last year at eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
I'll make a motion pending approval of the review of solicitor. The technical services.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The second one is another agreement with Zito, pass that April date, where we'd be lowering the cost down to six fifteen sixty per month due to some changes we made on the IT side and reduce some services there. So it would be the same contract terms presumably that are approved by the solicitor, just moving that term another year to lower cost.
Okay. I'll make a motion pending approval of the solicitor. The technical services agreement between county of Blair. Is it available to the communications? I'll second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Park and Rec.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Chuck Gomack from the Park and Rec Advisory Board. And we're requesting approval and allocation of seven thousand dollars for community-based grants. Each grant would be eligible for a maximum worth of one thousand dollars. And I believe we have, this earmark is aligned, I haven't on our current budget.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just, I think that Commissioner Webster, I consider this a larger amount, which is not within the budget. My feeling at that time, it appears to be, even though it is budgeted until a parking lot, that all the parks completed and fixed, I'm not really convinced.
And I have to agree that we have looked at that inflation. But we are concerned about making certain that now the park is safe for people to access and the parking lot has got a problem for several years. I think, I believe I mentioned this at a park and rec meeting that they haven't asked. So although I think it would be wonderful to do this, I'm really concerned more about getting the park usable for this. We just had a wonderful break, and it's a really good day. It's brilliant, and it's beautiful, the amphitheater, I'm sorry. There's been so much progress that, that value, it would be great to see that get completely, whatever, in order and then we can go see what kind of changes comes to this.
I think we are looking at options for additional grants also in the future. I believe it's the intent of the board to do a needs assessment of the park, much like you do. For your bridges have a five-year program to find the needs done and assign costs. So hopefully that will be completed by the, by the end of the summer.
Thank you.
Hello. So I'm here today to request approval to submit an application for the twenty-three, twenty-four PCOR Loss Prevention Grant Program. This is part two of one of the submissions to include upgrading two windows of bullet-resistant glass at one of our MTJ locations in total amount of four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and four cents. Purchase of two floor track floor cable covers for the IT department, a total amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. And the purchase of two air fiber wireless bridges for the IT department in the total amount of two thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-four cents. So the total grant award was thirty thousand dollars. I did a first submission, which was awarded in February, for twenty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. And this second submission total is for the balance, which is seventy-four oh four.
Any comments or questions? Maybe a motion to approve. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Prison.
Hello. The prison is requesting approval to award and reject the milk bids to milk products for the prison. We are looking to award to Rich's Dairy and to reject Bellwood.
Any comments or questions?
The milk bids were not, I'm sorry, let me, let me back to the stage. The milk bids were accepted at last commissioner meeting. They were open the day before. They were opened the day before with one area of complication that we had to work through with legal. Legal department did give us some guidance on that. We were able to request more information from the bidders and have them fill out a form. There was a technical difficulty with the, the way it was entered into pen bid. Unfortunately, those forms weren't due until after our agenda, our agenda was to be complete yesterday at 1:00. So to fill in kind of some of the blanks there, Veilwood Farms did not choose to return the form that we asked, so they technically are rejected because of their incomplete information. And then the Richards Dairy was the state minimum price plus $0 in both the pint and the gallon, so they will only be charging us the state minimum. So that's the blanks on your agenda to fill in for the public, yep.
Comments or questions? I'm just glad this is finally.
Me too. I was going to say, it feels like it took us a long time to get back to what we were doing before. So, till next time, yep, we'll back with that, have a lot of lessons.
I'll make a motion to approve the Richards Dairy. Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks. Old Business.
I believe there still are outstanding questions to the legal team on the old business item, so I do not believe that's ready to move forward and. Let's go, go from there.
Make a motion to approve. All in favor? Aye. Next board of commissioners meeting will be held Thursday, April 25th.